Alright guys.
It's up and running?
Alright guys, welcome back. Let the record reflect the governing body reconvened open meeting at 7:21 PM. Looks like we got our livestream back up and going. I'm sorry for the delay, but like I stated before, we just want to make sure that everyone that does want to see it can see it and that we also have a recording of it as well in case any of us wants to go back and look and see, see what all was said. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to a discussion item and the discussion is about vacancy appointments. And Mr. Lau, you have the floor.
I'm actually gonna recuse myself too.
Okay. For those of you that didn't hear that, because I don't know if his microphone was on, Mr. Young is gonna recuse himself for the discussion.
Alright, so thank you for the floor. I'm going to just start fairly short and then if you all have questions, we can throw those out, but I don't want to belabor too many points. So as you all recall, back in October of 2024, city changed its charter ordinances regarding filling vacancies for both mayor and city council. And that is a process that is, there are some general state laws and then municipalities like Spring Hill are allowed to pass a charter ordinance to exempt themselves out of certain types of state laws, those included, to create their own system. So one of them, for example, is how to fill vacancies. The general thrust was to change the last interpretation of the former charter ordinances, which said that a vacancy was filled and that person who took the seat filled it until the next election of that seat. The new scheme is kind of a two-tiered vacancy approach. It applies the same to mayor and governing body or city council member, which is that if a vacancy happens before February 1 of the year in which an election is set. So this year, there is an election and a vacancy before February 1 of this year triggers a partial fill-in. So the person appointed sits in that seat until the next regular election, essentially two years or less. And at that point, for city council, that seat is back up again for a shortened two-year term and then it's back on its normal four-year process. Councilmember Thrawn is doing that right now. He came in to fill Councilmember Van Houden's seat, came before February 1 of an election year, filled out until the next election rather than the entirety of Chip's former term. And he's back up for just, he could only re-certify or rerun for that, finishing out the two-year term. After that, his seat will revert to four-year terms and anyone can run for that. For mayor, rather than having a shortened two-year term, it just goes on the next regular election and continues his four years. So as you recall, four years ago, we had a vacancy in the office of mayor. There was quite a bit of application of some maybe vague charter ordinances. That same process would not necessarily happen here. We wouldn't have a four-year term. We'd just have a two-year term and then to the next regular election. So the way things are coming up for this next election, we have an election in November. Candidates who are successful in that election will be sworn in the second Monday of that first January after the election, which is January 12 of 2026. The next, at that next regular meeting of the governing bodies, so January 22 of 2026, city council will elect amongst themselves a council president. And that council president role is where a vacancy for the office of mayor is filled. Whoever's council president becomes the mayor in the event of a permanent vacancy or a short-term vacancy, whereas a vacancy in the office of a city council member is appointed by the mayor with consent of the rest of the city council. So that is our current, I guess, structure. If you all have any questions about how this works, it's a fairly new process. It's only been tested once. Councilmember Thrawn is welcome to pitch in how he feels it's going for him personally and you all are welcome to politely tell him whether you agree with that or not.
Challenge accepted.
Yeah.
So me personally, I think the integrity of our elections is the single most important thing that matters in the city and making sure that we've got the constituents and the people that live in these cities confidence that these things are being ran fairly and in accordance with our laws and ordinances. I think it's very, very important stepping in to this position, applying with Joe and the city to be able to sit in the seat until the next election cycle was a, it was honestly, there was the linchpin of me choosing to make that decision was the fact that I was going to be in this position for a short period. I did not want to be sitting here appointed without, with any doubt in my mind that I wasn't here for anything less than the best interest of the city. So having to run five months after jumping into this very, very information-intensive procedures, it's been, it's been humbling. I, I think it's the right way to handle it moving forward. Life is busy. Life is crazy. People that step up and do this job sacrifice a lot. They give up a lot of time. They give up a lot of free time to do things that they would rather be doing than having discussions about ordinances. So with that being said, I think as far as the, the procedures that we have set up currently, I think it's, it's really about as fair as you can possibly get. People that put in for these positions typically have a lot of irons in the fire and sometimes motivated people move on to other things and vacancies happen and that's the reality of life is that we've all got something going on. So having it set up to where we're not sitting in one position appointed for any longer than is absolutely necessary. For me, it's about as, about as fair as you could possibly hope to get.
And one thing to comment after speaking of, you know, this process being as fair, this is a pretty standard process. So we did a good analysis of everyone else on the Kansas side of the metro because Missouri law is completely different. And this was a pretty, this is a relatively unique approach as far as the shortened two-year term for city council members. But most cities have some sort of approach now of whether it's shortened term or a vacancy for something other than a full term. So that seems to be where things tended to be trending. It's kind of, you know, some cities have come back off that recently. I will say one thing that is, seems fairly unanimous in the metro on the Kansas side is a lack of special elections. And that is something that our charter ordinance also includes. So there is, the charter ordinance specifies that there will be, will be no special elections in the event of a vacancy. And there's a couple of reasons for that. The first is that special elections are a cost the city has to bear on its own. And Spring Hill is in a fairly unique position, especially amongst special elections, because we sit in two counties. So Spring Hill has to pay for more infrastructure to hold a special election than any of the other Johnson County-only cities or other cities across the state. So they would have to pay for polling places in Miami and Johnson County and that includes advanced polling places as well. Since that charter ordinance has passed, the state legislature has changed special elections slightly. It is now much more limited on when they can be held. Before it could, was up to cities a bit more openly when they could have special elections. Currently, there's just three times a year essentially when a special election can be held. So the earliest that one could be held after members are sworn in in January would be the first week of March. And candidly, that's probably not enough time to get a special election set up, have people declare and operated and run and early voting and all that. So the next earliest would be August or November of that year. And at that point, you're looking at having three elections in three years for one seat. So the, and you all are welcome to correct me if I'm wrong. The sense I got as we were changing the charter ordinance last time was special elections were a cost that we did not want to impose on taxpayers as long as the city was changing the appointment process to have these shortened terms and quicker elections to fill vacancies. So currently, in the event of a vacancy at any point during a member of the governing body's term, there will not be a special election.
And I'll just speak from experience on this. I went through this four years ago and I'll be the first to say it was a terrible position for the city. It was a terrible position for all of us, for especially me and Brian, that were here back then to be in that situation. It was not something we asked for, something we wanted. But we made the most and the best of the situation and the hand that we were dealt. And I'm proud of what we've accomplished in the last four years. I think the city is in much better standing four years now than when we got it four years ago. We've made, just looking out here, we've hired some incredible staff members that, that have taken the city to a whole new level. We've accomplished a lot of, I mean, we could just go on and on of the things that we as a whole have accomplished in the last four years. It is a thankless job. I would not wish what I went through, especially the first few months, on anyone. It was a big learning curve. But I've loved doing it and I feel like I've been pretty, I mean, I'm not gonna pat myself on the back, but I feel like we've been pretty successful and I feel like I've done with, with what I have done a pretty good job and I'm proud, proud of what we accomplished. So, and I really enjoyed doing it and it was a very tough decision to choose not to continue to do it in the next election process. So, and just so everybody knows, I know I put it out on Facebook, but I chose not to run again. Honestly, it was my family that, that asked me not to. They, they wanted, they wanted dad home more. I spend, part of the reason we've got, been able to accomplish this along with the great staff that we have, excuse me, is that I spend a lot of time on, on city items, focusing on things for the city and I've poured my heart and soul out into it. And because of that time, I've missed kids' games. I've missed, you know, I have my youngest daughter's eight and I have three other kids and so I've missed a lot of their things. And what I told my wife, I said, "I'm never gonna look back on my life and say, 'Man, I wish I would've spent more time at the city.'" You know, "I'm gonna look back and say, 'Man, I wish, I wish I would've spent more time with my kids.'" So I know that doesn't include, that's not necessarily exactly what we're talking about, but I just wanted to put that out there for any people that might be saying, "Well, he's, you know, this was done on purpose" or any of that stuff. No, it was a very hard decision and I love, I love working for the city. I love working for the citizens. I love this town. I love this community. That's why I got involved. I've lived here for 22 years. I've raised all four of my kids here. Love the school district. Love the member, the small-town feel that we have here. And I think it's awesome that we're the fastest-growing community here the last multiple years and it's been fun to be a part of it. And I'm not going anywhere and I'll still be mayor for quite a few more months now and I'm gonna work my butt off till the last day. So, and you guys will see me around. I'm not going anywhere. And who knows, when my kid gets, kids get older, I might even jump back in the game. But I just wanted to kind of put that out there and open up the floor for anyone else.
I'm pretty torn on, on this one. I have felt for a long time now that coming off of the 2021 election, what our town really needs the most is a boring election.
Yeah.
Is one that's not questioned in any way, one that doesn't have any kind of mistakes or mishaps or unfortunate circumstances, or it just needed to be clean and unquestionable and real easy so that we could kind of have some closure and move on from that bad period of time that we went through. And we did have that two years ago, so that was good. And now I, I guess it feels different because it's my reelection cycle that this one's hitting again. So also because it's the mayor seat two times in a row. I'm not a fan of the special election idea in, you know, by itself. I wasn't when we changed the ordinance. I like how we changed the ordinance so that if it vacates very early in the term, you have to run for the second half of it. I think that also encourages better quality candidates, knowing that you're gonna have to run multiple times in two, you know, two campaigns in two years, basically. So I like the system that we have established and I think that addressed a lot of the concerns of the citizens with how things went down four years ago. I still feel like as, as many negatives as a special election would bring, we need that for our, for our heart and for our emotions more than anything. With what Mr. Lau, because I asked Mr. Lau to do a lot of research on the special election issue. Four years ago, I wasn't willing to consider it because it was a one-off issue or a one, one-time occurrence. And, you know, most of us were of the belief that, okay, we got struck by lightning. It's not gonna happen to us again. We kind of got struck by lightning a second time here. So I don't want to go through what we went through last time because that was an incredibly bad experience for all of the people who were up here and for many people, many of our citizens too. So I'm open to listening to all and any options or ideas of how to manage and maneuver this situation. Knowing what Mr. Lau has told us about special elections, I think that the negatives are still gonna be really, really negative, especially with the timeline. Like I would even be willing to consider the cost, the financial cost of a special election if we could do it quickly, if we could do it in March, if we could do it right away. It doesn't look like we're gonna be able to do that. We wouldn't be able to do one until approximately a year from the upcoming election. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but it will automatically go onto the ballot in '27. Is that correct or is that not correct?
You would have to change your charter ordinance to set that out.
So as we sit now, the mayor's position will not automatically go on the ballot in '27?
Not through a special election?
No, I mean, so like the midterm of the mayor's four-year term, which is getting ready to be on the election in November.
Right.
It will be vacated prior to the February 1 date.
So it would then go on?
So it will go on to the '27?
Yes.
Cycle?
Correct.
For the remaining two-year term of that?
The mayor would be, then it would be a full four-year term in '27. So councilmembers have the two-year shortened?
That's the catch.
Mayor doesn't have that.
Okay. And that would give us then a four-seat cycle on one year and then, or four seats going on one year and then two going on the other. Right now, we have three and three even balance. And we did talk about this briefly when we passed the ordinance.
What are the chances that this could happen?
Could happen. I do remember that you brought that up and we kind of brushed it off and said, "Okay, we're not gonna get struck by lightning twice." And now we're in that situation. So I feel good that it's, it's gonna be on an election ballot in two years, no matter what. So I think we can stand on that and say that that's good. If we can't do an election for a year, it doesn't make sense for us to do a special election in a year and then have a regular election a year later.
A year later.
And then you're gonna be electing it two years later, or no, I guess it goes for four then. But if it's a council city, it would go two years later.
And I, and I will say, for what it's worth, when we were discussing the possibility of a catch or a savings where we wouldn't have too many on one year, I think it was a five and one was the split discussion. We were saying, "Okay, maybe that's where we want to put in a guardrail." I think the four and two was something that we all thought, "Well, that, that might happen and then things might even back out," you know, "the way the two-year terms work." So, you know, it, it's not ideal, but it, it's not exactly, I don't know that the alternatives we were proposing at the time would have stepped in to prevent what that would turn over in 2027.
I still do think that that's a better alternative than a special election. Like I said, if we could've done a special election in March, I probably would've been all over that. Write-ins really worries me too, just because there will be so many voters who don't know what's going on with this situation. It is gonna be incredibly hard to feel like we can get the message out to all of our voters or all of our eligible voters, what is happening here? We can put the greatest effort possible out there for that and I don't know that that's gonna be real effective.
No, I, I agree. And I think, you know, when 90-year-old granny's out there and goes to the, goes to the box office to, to vote, you know, she's gonna see one name on there and just mark it and go, unless somebody's told her or she physically knows. So I just, I, I agree.
I looked at some voting data from the last four elections today. So from the 17 election, 19 election, 21 election and 23 election, there is a grand total between all four of those elections, 70 write-ins and a grand total of almost 8,300 total votes in those four elections, which is less than 1% of the voter total. And I think relying on that system in any way and trying to interpret that system other than the write-in wins outright will be incredibly difficult. So I'm not really sure what to do. Kristen, if you don't mind, or Mrs. Feedback, Councilwoman Feedback, I'm kind of curious if you could give us more information, like kind of what your plans are? I mean, you're just, let's say that you win still being on the ballot and so you would not take the seat essentially. Is that, is that what you're saying for sure?
My thought right now is if, if I were to get elected is then to appoint somebody.
Okay. So basically you would, you would take the seat for a very short period of time, appoint a new mayor and that would actually bounce you out? Because once you go-
Actually, what I was thinking is staying on until May to try to fulfill my commitment as city council.
Right.
And I know you call it struck by lightning. It's called life and it's called, you know, having a career and different things like that. But yes, that's, that's what my plan would be right now.
If I was offensive, I apologize. That was not my intent.
So, so to be clear, your intentions will be to turn down the mayor position, maintain your council position and be part of the appointment process if you are, win the popular vote?
Yes, that's what I said.
Yeah, I just wanted, I was making sure I had it straight in my head.
Any other, excuse me, any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to speak one more time to, we, I was not part of the city council in 2024. I was not part of the city government during the election process last time around. I was however, a voter. I was, I was someone who went to the polls and, and did my civic duty and there were a lot of frustrations and, and, and opinions generated during that time, some of which were absolutely based in very, very real feelings, very, very real concerns. Some of them unfortunately were also based in less than a true points. But my, my confidence going forward with this is simply that you guys did what you needed to do in 2024, addressed the issue as responsibly and as clearly as possible. I think our ordinance reads true. It's easy to interpret. Our constituents are smart. They understand how this process works and I think sticking exactly to the letter of the law during this process is how you start rebuilding any trust that's been damaged, period. Stick to the law as clear as it can be. So period. How our ordinance reads is how I want to see it play out.
Absolutely.
I guess I do want to address something for just a second here. When you talk about trust and integrity. So I, I think the biggest reason why I made the announcement when I did is that the citizens would get an opportunity to make a decision versus being maybe what some would consider selfish, which would be to take the position and then around May say, "Oh, by the way, I have to leave." So, you know, I, I really looked into this before I made the announcement. I actually called the Johnson County Election Office myself to figure out what the options were. And then I talked with the city leadership to really understand what it meant. And I did not know that after June 2nd, that if your name's on the ballot, it couldn't be removed. I did not know that was a state law. That's on me and I apologize. Otherwise, I, you know, at that point in time, I didn't have an offer for a massive job that I'm getting ready to take. So-
I don't think you've done anything wrong.
Oh, I know. And I'm not getting defensive with you. I'm just letting you know that.
You have handled this in an excellent way. It's transparent. It's getting out there to the public. We're getting the information out there. We're talking about what our problem is and ways to solve it. So like, I, I have no angst for you at all.
And I appreciate that, but I also am being, it's, it appears like it's being compared to what happened last time. And what happened last time is the election took place.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
The election took place, a mayor was selected and then the next day or couple days, I don't know. You know, so this is a completely different situation. So people that compare it as the same, you're misinformed and you're mischaracterizing it. I mean, that is not the same thing. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Yeah. I was more thinking that it's going to be the same in how we're going to have to fill the mayor spot, more or less, in that it's not gonna be someone who's directly elected from the ballot to the seat. That, that is the major issue really. So-
So in the event that an individual runs for mayor and elects not to take that seat, there will be a vacancy in that position. So people, anyone who wins will be sworn in on that January, second Monday in January, which is the 12th. There will be a vacancy in mayor, which will mean that Mayor Berkey will remain as the mayor until the next meeting. This is gonna, that will happen the exact same way it happened four years ago when Mayor Ellis stayed on until there was a council president. At that meeting on January 22nd, the governing body, the city council, sorry, not the whole governing body, the city council will elect amongst itself a council president and that person will then become mayor. You will then have a qualified individual to take that seat. And Mayor Berkey will go back to being Mr. Berkey and he can step down and that council president will be the mayor for the next, until the next regular election in '27.
So our situation is that in January of '26, the five people who are in the council spots here will be selecting who the next mayor is.
Yes.
Which is what our citizens were incredibly unhappy with four years ago.
Yeah. Correct. The difference from four years ago will be that it's going to be back on the ballot in two years.
Correct. And that we know, we know about it in advance.
Correct. Yeah, and knowledge.
And the only thing that would change that is if one of the writing candidates happens to win.
Right.
And then, and then they would be selected by the citizen.
Right. And if the write-in wins, I, I have no issue with that at all. Write-in wins, hands down, write-in gets the seat. Like that is, that is easy peasy. It's like that in every election. I just think that is an incredibly difficult task with only an, an unopposed candidate on the ballot. There are gonna be so many people that don't know what's going on and just check that one box and it's gonna be really, really hard for a write-in candidate to defeat that, I think. And if we go the write-in route and say, "Well, let's take the next highest write-in", how many votes are we disenfranchising that go to the only candidate on the ballot, you know?
I'm still, I'm a little concerned that you're discussing making decisions outside of the way our city ordinances are currently reading and that, that's a confusing thing for me because we just made it very, very clear what the ordinances are, how these situations are handled. I feel like discussing about any, any alternatives outside of that is not responsible.
Okay. I feel differently because I felt the heat of what happened four years ago personally. I was one of the people who caught all the grief. I was one of the people who was talked poorly about, about the decisions that I made. And all five of the people that are gonna be sitting up here in January are gonna go through that same scenario again, no matter who gets selected and no matter who ends up in that mayor's seat.
And that's unfortunate, but that's the situation we find ourselves in and-
And I will be fine with going ahead that way.
Well, it's not a matter of how you're fine. It's what our, it's what our city ordinances read. You don't get to decide when and how you apply the law.
Correct. But we also are responsible for making city ordinances and looking at situations and discussing situations. And tonight, we're just discussing it. We're not doing anything.
I, I understand that. I would say that from a position on a governing body, seeing a situation and having laws specifically prescribed to handle those situations and then going and immediately discussing how we can change them to make them easier for us is probably not the most responsible way to handle it.
That's probably correct. I would probably agree with that. I don't think it hurts anything to discuss alternatives as a discussion.
I mean, I do think that we addressed a lot of these issues with the new city ordinance and changing just how life happens and events happen and how things can affect how the governing body is perceived and how they go into their position. You know, I, I know it's not ideal and it's not the best-case scenario for a citizen, but it does throw it onto a two-year ballot, which on the plus side, you do, like Mr. Lau said, you give that person running the opportunity to engage with the city, to engage with the community and to have a proper election. Whereas if you do a special election and turn around and go, you know, even if you're in March or February, you don't give that time. And special elections typically don't have the same draw as a normal ele- And special elections typically don't have the same draw as a normal election. You don't have the community engagement, you don't have. The participation and I think you're still gonna have some backlash on that. Whereas when you have like, you know, Philip was saying with, you know, it is a city ordinance, so if this happens again. Hopefully not, we have precedents and we have that. This has happened two years ago or four years ago or whatever. And moving forward, we know the outcome is going to be handled in a certain way. I know it's, it's probably not unfortunate, but I do think. Write-ins have a chance. It, there wouldn't be a reason for people to run as a write-in if they didn't think they had a chance. And if you can get out there and win as a write-in, I think more power to you because. You're not on the ballot and I think that's the, a big testament to not only that person and the character. But it also has to do with. You know, what they have accomplished going out, speaking to the community and engaging.
Well, I think shortening it to a two-year process that, like we changed the ordinance. That also gives that person an opportunity to earn the public's trust and to earn their vote come the next time around. You know, they've seen him do the job for a little while and say, well, you know, they've, they've earned my trust or vice versa. No, they didn't earn my trust. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Lau, do you have anything more to add or are we good to go?
I have nothing more from my end, so. Thank you all.
All right, we'll go ahead and end discussion item at this time and if someone would like to get Mr. Young. I'll wait till he gets back in here before we proceed further. Welcome back. Alright guys, we're gonna move on and next item on the agenda is citizen participation. This is time when the public can come in and speak what, about whatever they would like to speak about. We just ask that when you do step up, you state your name and your address. Um, first person we have on the list is Mr. Daniel Torres.
Okay, my name is Daniel Torres. I live at two hundred and seven. Sorry, two oh seven, two five west, two hundred and twenty-sixth street in Spring Hill. The reason for coming up here today is to discuss the use of asphalt millings. With city ordinance, uh zoning ordinance seventeen dot three four two. Overview of the ordinance, Spring Hill zoning ordinance outlines property development standards including apartments for driveway surfacing. The ordinance emphasizes durability and stability of materials, proper drainage and corrosion control. And compatibility with surrounding land use and driveway material. Um, and aesthetics. Sorry, lost my spot here. Excuse me. Importantly, the ordinance does not restrict driveway materials to hot asphalt mix or concrete alone. It allows for alternative materials to meet the performance and environmental standards set forth by the city. Why asphalt millings comply with the ordinance? Durability and stability, when properly compacted asphalt millings form a hard surface, weather resistant surface. They perform well under the freeze thaw cycles and resist rotting and erosion. Drainage. Uh, and erosion control asphalt millings are semi-permeable, allowing for natural water filtration. The use reduces runoff and supports stormwater management goals outlined in the ordinance. Um, local pres- precedents and supports, Spring Hill's street maintenance program uses mill. And overlay technique demonstrating city level acceptance of milling as a viable infrastructure method. Uh, local contractors offer asphalt milling services for residential driveways. Um, indicating market readiness and community demand. Homeowners have reported positive long-term performance of millings in residential settings with minimal maintenance and strong weather resistance. All this to say, um asphalt millings. Meet the intent and requirement of the zoning ordinance. They offer a cost-effective environmentally responsible and durable alternative to hot melt asphalt, um especially for residential driveways. I respectfully request that the city council formally recognize asphalt millings. As a compliant material under the ordinance and allow their use in residential driveways.
Thank you very much. We will take that to them and I believe, I believe they have a copy of that as well, so. Thank you. We didn't have anyone else sign up on the list, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, now would be your time. If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation at this time and move on to the consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but if there are any questions or comments on that, now would be the time. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal council action. The first item on the agenda is consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty five dash R dash seventeen. A resolution of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas establishing a second edition of the city's comprehensive fee resolution as authorized under the municipal code of Spring Hill, Kansas. And Mr. Lau or Mrs. Garrett, you have the floor. I don't know who's taking that one. Tag team.
Sure, so uh as you may recall, last year we consolidated all of the city's. Uh fees that it imposes for various services, permits, things like that into a single fee resolution so that. Um residents or interested parties could just find it all in one place. This is an update of that same comprehensive fee resolution, so modify certain fees. Uh bring some things up, changes to Cora's, Cora fees for example, were required by some new Kansas state laws. Uh so changes should be in your packet. Uh if you have any specific questions on changes, you're welcome to ask them. Um, I might not know all of them, but most of our department heads are here and can, can talk about those further if you'd like, so otherwise. Uh, this isn't anything necessarily new, it's just updating costs and, and of our permit fees as we go, so.
I had a quick question when I was looking at um the different ones that they're changing. Um, there's a note in there that says something about the staffing. Well, it was like, for instance, one fee was like thirty dollars and then it changed. We talked about it, Lane.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, my question, cause yeah, it's like that one quite a bit.
Okay, yeah, so um the legislature changed the way that municipalities can. Uh charge costs and fees for an open records request under Cora, which is the Kansas Open Records Act. Um, and they made it more restrictive on how municipalities can impose those costs on people making requests. Uh, so generally that brings the cost down for someone making a request, uh makes the city staff be a little more creative. Uh and how they handle it, but uh they can only charge an hourly rate for uh the lowest paid city employee qualified to run. Uh the search and production of those records, so. Which is probably good for Ms. Garrett, she won't be the one doing it anymore, but.
So the max now is two hundred, where before it was thirty dollars an hour, no, no cap.
Right, and it's, there's also some more requirements for when it gets over that two hundred dollar amount, we have to call and, and check in with the requesting party and say, hey, you wanna clarify this? Uh, this is what we think it's gonna cost. Is there a way to narrow your request to get it cheaper? And for the record, that is already something that staff here is very good at doing. Ms. Garrett, Ms. Wood are very good at reaching out to people and saying, hey. Here's what you asked for, did you maybe mean this or this? Because what you asked for is awful big and we're gonna have to get in IT to do email searches. Have Spencer come in and look at stuff, so uh your staff's already very good at working with people. Um, so this shouldn't hit the city as hard as maybe it would hit other municipalities, but it is a change we need to reflect in our resolution.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, the rest all pretty, from what I could see, pretty miniscule as far as changes go.
Yeah, that was the only, only big one.
So before code official could waive something and now it's just city administrator, whereas does it mean? Yeah, so other than that, I didn't see any big ones, but yeah, when I saw that, I didn't quite understand what the big change was, but that's, that's a state.
It's state.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash R dash seventeen. A resolution of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas establishing the second edition of the city's comprehensive fee resolution as authorized under the municipal code of Spring Hill. Kansas further rescinding all other resolutions in conflict with this resolution.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of an interlocal agreement for the crossing rail elimination project with the city of Fontana and the city of Fort Scott. And Mrs. Dunn, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. We uh entered into a, we're proposing an interlocal agreement with these two cities. Um, we're participating together um on this eastern Kansas community railroad. At grade crossing and limit, I need to think of an acronym for that, the railroad grant. Um, to study those crossings to look at how, the feasibility of eliminating people driving across them to be straight. Um, we are working together with those two cities. Coordinating together made us more qualified for the grant, made, we made them more qualified. It was a mutually beneficial thing. So now that we have been awarded the grant and we're ready to move forward, we created the interlocal agreement so that. There's an understanding between the parties of that the city of Spring Hill will receive the grant and any funds related to the grant. From our own uh money as well as the money Fort Scott will send in, the state of Kansas, Burlington Northern. And we will hire, we're using the RFP process and everything to hire the engineer to do the study. And so what we're asking tonight is um your approval to create the interlocal agreement and get this. Project moving down the road so we can receive those funds and, and make it work. Both Fontana and Fort Scott have already voted. And accepted the interlocal agreement and signed it. Can I answer any questions?
Can you talk about the fee?
Say it again.
Can you talk about the fee of how much that's gonna be?
The fee for the city? The total amount of the grant is two million one hundred fifty thousand dollars between um money contributed from Burlington Northern. And the state of Kansas hub, the local match for this, for Spring Hill is sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars. And for Fort Scott is forty thousand. We've elected as a group not to take any of the funds from Fontana because they have. One crossing to deal with and so we're just helping out a smaller community and they help us too, so.
And, and for anybody that knows the city of Fontana or has ever driven through it, it's about. Twenty-five houses, maybe fifty houses.
Doesn't it just have one area?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty small, so we're not talking about their, their buy-in would have been very miniscule, but.
They also have, we split this based on how many crossings, like um Spring Hill I think has seven. And Fort Scott's looking at four and Fontana had one, their piece of the pie is just small. They are very grateful to have these other cities help them get funds and a grant to study theirs that they couldn't get on their own, so it's a great partnership.
It is, and I know the mayor down there personally and she did reach out to say thank you to me and thank you to, to the governing body and everybody involved, cause it's. They struggle with resources down there and so it was a huge help to them for us to be willing to add them on to the, on to the pot, so.
Is there any other cities involved? I, I thought we had a couple others too, or are we stopping at one hundred and seventy-fifth on this study?
We're stopping at one hundred and seventy-fifth. It doesn't mean other. Cities along that same rail line aren't getting grants and doing a study. We're just doing this eastern Kansas corridor for the three cities.
So it was what, start to one hundred and seventy-fifth all the way through town, I'm assuming?
Yes, it's all, all the.
All the way to Fontana and all the way to Fort Scott.
There's seven, seven of ours and then, and then the others as well.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the interlocal agreement between Spring Hill, Fort Scott and Fontana for the eastern Kansas communities rail corridor. At grade crossing elimination plan authorized the mayor to sign the agreement and authorize the transfer. Of sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars to the project fund for the city's local match contribution.
I second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of member item of understanding with USD two thirty for the one hundred ninety-ninth street improvements project. And Mrs. Abel, you have the floor or a less attractive, Mr. Lau?
Yeah, yikes, but fair. Um, Ms. Abel is on the road tonight, so I am. Deputized in to do my best impression, which will probably leave you wanting, cause she's really good at this stuff, so. Uh, this is not necessarily a new item for you all, we talked about this previously. Um, this is the same trail agreement that we went over with you all. The update here is that it's been approved by the school district. Um, just this week, uh so we are ready to have it come before you all for formal approval. And execution by the mayor and get that thing going, so. Uh, nothing's been changed really since we talked about this last time, so this is more of a formality. Um, kinda finalizing what you all have already expressed an interest in, so.
And the number we came back to is a hundred and nine and change, cause I know, I know we were kinda bouncing back and forth on. Cost now and cost when it.
Right, yeah, so negotiated back and forth. Allison did a great job doing that uh with the district and I think everyone comes out uh in a good spot here, so. It's a win for the community for sure.
I know they were a little iffy on it and I think we came to a conclusion that worked out for everybody.
Yeah, my understanding is it passed on their consent agenda. No one asked for it to be pulled onto a regular, there wasn't a lot of discussion, so. Doesn't seem like there was any public headache anyway.
Alright, sounds good.
So I was in the meeting when we first sat down and talked with the school district. Um, and one of the things that was emphasized was possibly when this project's gonna start, so do we have? Any idea when that will, isn't that a part of the other one hundred ninety-ninth project, right, Lane?
Y- yes, um currently they're working with acquisitions. I think there's a couple left, uh maybe one on the north side of one hundred ninety-ninth and one on the south side. Uh, once we get those and then the utility relocates happen, then we'll be uh going out to bid this project, hopefully. Late fall of this year is, is the current estimate, so. We hope to have that uh under contract or back to the governing body to get under contract uh before the end of this year.
I think the other question was, is it, is it gonna connect to the neighborhood sidewalk that's either there or does that one need to be extended also?
Is that the one on the west side of?
To the east of the admin center?
It'll, it'll connect all the way back to, what is that, Renner?
So, okay, so it'll go all the way to Renner?
Yeah, it'll go all the way to Renner and then from Renner to Ridgeview.
I think that was their main complaint was that Prairie Ridge hadn't put their portion, yeah.
So it's gonna go all the way to Renner? So that'll be, go beyond. Go east of the entrance to Prairie Ridge.
I think they, that hasn't been developed yet over there, it's still. Cause they're going backwards, yeah.
I think there's roughly eighty acres on that. One sec, area that's not uh developed yet.
And that won't cause any trouble for when that's developed as far as it's not gonna be ripped out and?
No, because that would be put in the, the right of way.
Okay, so we should be good, okay.
I do have one quick question, Spencer. We did some cost sharing on the trail, uh because we upgraded it to concrete. What was the city's, do we know an estimate of what the city's portion was?
Yeah, that's all included in the agreement.
Okay, I missed it. I wanna say it was like seventy or eighty.
I think it might have been originally.
I promised Ms. Abel I would drop the ball on something, so she's very quickly calling. I promised Ms. Abel I would drop the ball on something, so she's very quickly calling.
I read the.
I thought it was thirty six thousand from, from just off the top of my head. I think I remembered, but I could be wrong.
I read the agreement. I swear I didn't see it in there.
Got the total funding, got the one oh nine number.
Well, the difference between asphalt and concrete.
Oh, the difference.
I thought, I thought it was thirty six thousand.
Yeah, it's got the total of what the school district's paying, which would have been the equivalent of asphalt, but we're making it concrete. So I'm curious how much more we're needing to pay for it beyond what the school district has agreed to pay.
Allison, do you remember the original number? Was it like around a hundred and seventy or eighty? And then the, the other number with asphalt was, was it closer to a hundred and fifty or forty?
I wanna say it was like two hundred thirty thousand with concrete. And closer to like the one thirty with asphalt.
So, yeah, assuming a two thirty number.
About one twenty?
You're looking about one twenty.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't remember it being in the twos, but.
Yeah, the number I remember being told.
I don't have that number.
Yeah, the, the number I remember was one eighty.
Number in front of me. We'll have to bid this out.
It's not directly important. I was just curious.
Yeah, we'll have to bid this out and whatever that enterprise is, that's, the city's gonna be responsible for covering that difference.
Yeah, no, the concrete companies out there.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the memorandum of understanding with U S D two thirty for the one hundred ninety ninth street improvement project.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider authorizing the staff to schedule the closing date, issue payment and authorize the mayor to sign the closing documents for the purchase of the property for the new wastewater treatment facility. And Mrs. Abel or Mr. Lau, you have the floor.
It's me again. Oh, okay. So um as you all are aware, the city put in an offer for some property on which to build a new wastewater treatment facility. Uh, we are here ready to close on that property. We have done title searches. We've done our due diligence. We are waiting on a final number for closing costs. We did get an estimate from our title company. Uh, as I was looking over that today, I think they used the incorrect purchase price. After the surveys, the land was slightly smaller than we thought by, I think about three acres. Um, so the good news is, is that's a savings to the city. The purchase price was an agreed upon per acre cost of ten thousand five hundred. So three acres smaller than what the uh estimates forehand was means the city saves a little under, over thirty thousand dollars. Closing costs shouldn't be significant on top of that. Uh, the estimates I'm looking at. I'm not gonna get into guesses here. I'm guessing it would be less than a few thou, less than five to ten thousand dollars, but as your agenda review sheet says, we need to get to the closing table to make sure we know for certainty what those will be and maybe work with the title company to make sure they're using the right surveys for the purchase price. I think they just used an inputted amount based on our pre-survey estimates on acreage. So when we get that done, uh we'll know for sure it should not be a significant cost. The purchase price before closing costs is one point six, one million six hundred ninety thousand seven hundred ten dollars. Um, and that is for a total of one hundred sixty one point oh two acres of property. So what we are certainly looking for uh today is an authorization for the mayor to go ahead and sign the closing documents. Incur those closing costs, which are, shouldn't be significant. And we will make sure to update you all once those come in as a final number for, for what they ended up being.
And I do wanna just state that the, this is coming from the wastewater fund and that has a balance of eight point eight four million dollars. So that's where that's funding's coming from. It's not a new tax or anything like that. It's something that we, we already have the funds in, in a pot for things like this.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I was gonna ask that and you, you got it.
There you go.
Any other questions or comments?
I know this is something we've been talking about for, I don't know, probably three years. Um, something that we knew was coming up and none of us were too excited about it because it's not something to get super excited about. But unfortunately, it's, it's just where you're at when you start to run out of, run out of super uh sewer capability. Um, so it's a much needed thing in our, in the entire area here. Um, so this, man. We're at the point where we, we've gotta do it. We don't really have any choice but to do it. So it, I guess it's exciting in that manner is we'll be able to, we'll be able to serve more area and service the citizens, so. Any other questions or comments?
If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to authorize staff to schedule the closing date and issue payments for the purchase of the properties and associated closing costs. And authorize the mayor to sign the closing documents on behalf of the city.
I second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of temporary construction easements and permanent sanitary sewer easements for the northeast sewer expansion project and correct the amount of an already approved easement. And it looks like Mr. Spears coming to the floor.
The uh, the tag teams will continue.
The only reason why it seems like it's a little confusing is because we had Mrs. Abel for each one of these and so it keeps not being Mrs. Abel walking up. So I'm just guessing which one it's gonna be next.
Continued apologies. So uh, this is in relation to the northeast sewer uh project. This is the extension of sewer mains. Generally north of one hundred ninety first street, east of Woodland Street. Couple times before already, you've seen um easements uh brought to you. They're, they're coming in slowly as we're working with uh those property owners. Tonight, there is one additional easement that has been granted. And as was mentioned in a correction, one of the easements approved previously. We've listed the incorrect amount or valuation on the easement, so we're just setting the record straight on that valuation and accepting the uh, the additional, uh, that additional easement. This additional one and the corrected uh easement brings us to nine tracks out of eleven total. So we're, we're getting, getting close to being there.
What was the difference on the one that was incorrect?
I was afraid you were gonna ask that and I, I have the new value, but I don't have the.
That's why I didn't see the.
Previous one.
It, it.
Did it go up or down?
And I honestly don't know. It, it was not a, i- it wasn't anything that, that changed or was renegotiated. It was simply we had listed the, the incorrect amount. Uh, so the, the valuation didn't change. The agreed price didn't change. It was, it was just an error when, when we listed it.
Just wrote it down incorrect?
Yeah.
So has it been issued already or are we waiting to issue the payment?
Payment um would be issued af- uh, after approval.
The difference was five dollars.
Up or down?
Five whole dollars in addition to, I, I forget what the full amount was, but it was uh, we need to give them five dollars more.
So it's fifty thousand ninety.
And we have not issued the check yet.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't a huge.
Thank you, Mrs. Abel.
Yeah, I don't think five dollars is gonna break the bank, but we still wanna be accurate with our records.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Not entertaining a motion.
Uh, move to approve the temporary construction and permanent sanitary sewer easements associated with the northeast sewer expansion project. Correct the reimbursement amount of an already approved easement. Authorize the mayor to sign the easement agreements and authorize the finance department to issue payment to the property owners as outlined above.
I second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of Spring Hill task agreement number B M dash twenty twenty five dash zero one with Burns and McDonald for the northwest sewer expansion project. And Mr. Spear, it looks like you got this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so we're shifting from northeast to the northwest. So still just north of one hundred ninety first street. Um, now we're on the west side of one sixty nine. Much like that northeast expansion, it is preparing for, you know, future growth, expansion, development in the area and making sure that we have the infrastructure in place to accommodate that growth and expansion. The, there is an area, as you can see on the, on the map there, the uh kind of turquoise colored line would uh represents a gravity sewer line flowing south to a proposed new pump station. That would then pump that east in, back into our existing collection system. The city, as you may recall from uh several meetings ago. Uh, Mrs. Abel brought forth the, the, we engaged several different firms uh under on-call contracts. We took a look at those and, and there were uh five firms that seemed to, were their areas of expertise and, and ability lined up with this project really well. Um, we asked all five of them to provide us with proposals to design this, this project. We received proposals from four of those firms. And uh, tonight we're recommending approval of, of the uh task order with Burns and McDonald. They really, staff reviewed those proposals, felt that Burns and McDonald uh provided a lot of detail related to the reconstruction of the existing uh pump station that has to be modified. And also some creative ways to speed up the utility coordination and easement acquisition that would reduce the overall uh construction time. Uh, they really, really put a lot of effort in, seemed to understand the project and, and and, and got really involved with it. It also doesn't hurt that they were the lowest cost of the proposals that we received. So uh, all in all, it was, you know, represented a great value uh to the city as well. So staff's recommendation is to um accept and approve this uh task order. Um, it's a, you know, our standard template for on-call engineering. Nothing, nothing exotic about it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Uh, similar to the other one, this funding source is drawn from the sewer fund. And then if, if a project does come in, then we could be reimbursed for bond proceeds or financing that gets in place for whatever project it is. So, but currently it would come from the sewer fund.
Questions or comments?
Usually pretty happy when we like the firm that's the lowest bid.
Yeah, yeah, that's always real nice. And especially it seems like they were the most detailed as well, so we'll take it.
Uh, if no questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to accept the bid and approval of a task order number B M dash twenty twenty five dash zero one with Burns and McDonald for design of the northwest sewer expansion project and authorize the mayor and city staff to execute.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a cooperative agreement for sewer service with the board of county commissioners of Johnson County, Kansas. And Mr. Spear, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Sticking with this northwest sewer expansion project and, and looking at the, the map that's uh still up there. There uh, there is an area, it's within Johnson County, some of it, well, one area that's within the corporate limits of the city of Olathe. Uh, one that is within Johnson County, up generally near the area of, say, one hundred seventy ninth and Lone Elm. Those areas are currently served by, by Johnson County, uh Johnson County wastewater for sewer service. And that gravity uh mains within those areas flow to the sou- southern edge of, of each uh neighborhood. And then there are two separate lift stations that Johnson County wastewater maintains that pumps that uh wastewater back uh uphill to a treatment plant in Gardner. Johnson County wastewater, we've been in uh conversations with city staff. With the expansion of uh the northwest sewer project that we just discussed on the uh previous item. Spring Hill would have gravity sewers that would uh be able to serve both of these areas. Um, so they would, it would eliminate the need for the current pump stations that Johnson County wastewater has to maintain. And instead would let that continue to flow by gravity uh through Spring Hill system uh pumped over and we would, we would treat that. Uh, it, it's, it's a more efficient way of serving those areas. Freeze up space in their other, uh, in their wastewater treatment plant. And uh, and eliminates the need for the um, for those list stations. Both of which are, are slated for, you know, significant repairs and upgrades soon. The uh agreement before you between the city and Johnson County wastewater basically spells out that the city of Spring Hill would serve those areas, would uh receive and treat the wastewater. In, for the Nottingham Creek subdivision, we would also own and maintain the sanitary sewer collection system uh in there, in that neighborhood, as well as treat the wastewater. Um, down on the east side of Lone Elm, uh closer to one hundred eighty third. That area of Johnson County is currently served by a, a low pressure sewer system. And then goes to that lift station. Lit proposal is a little different there in that Johnson County wastewater would continue to um own and maintain that low pressure system. And would um in essence, just pay the city of Spring Hill to treat that wastewater um that then flows into our system. So we, we would have maintenance responsibility and treatment for about three hundred fifty homes and just treatment responsibility for a little over fifty in the, in the county. In exchange for that, Johnson, uh, the agreement spells out that Johnson County wastewater uh would pay the city uh two million dollars as a sewer connection fee uh for those areas. After that one-time upfront payment, then they would pay the city for the treatment of that uh low pressure system area. The Olathe residents of Nottingham Creek would begin to pay their sewer bill to the city of Spring Hill. Um, rather than to Johnson County wastewater. So um, there's a fair amount going on there, but that's uh two million dollars upfront coming back into the sewer fund that we were talking about. And about uh, you know, a little over four hundred new customers uh in there. It's a unique opportunity, you know, often when we extend these sewer lines, we have to front the money upfront and it, and it takes quite a while before we have flow and paying customers back on this, on those lines. Uh, this one comes in with about, you know, four hundred paying customers from day one, uh as soon as it goes into operation. So um, it's a good opportunity for Johnson County wastewater to eliminate um, the higher maintenance list stations and free up some capacity at, at their treatment facility. And it also uh lets us take advantage of uh collection system that we need to put in to serve this area anyway. And, and brings in some revenue to help offset and uh seed money, if you will, to get that started. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
This one was uh, well, I'm pretty proud of this one. This is one that Lane and I worked on quite a bit, many, many, many months discussing this one. And so I think it's a big benefit to Spring Hill. I think, like you said, it's, not only are they gonna pay us two million dollars, we'll also receive all those customers. And, and, and we wanted to expand in that area anyways. And so it just allows for both things to simultaneously happen with customers already on the books and essentially a pilot program right, right from the onset almost. Um, so it's a win-win for, I think, just about everybody involved. And Johnson County wastewater was gonna have to spend probably a couple million dollars to upgrade those pump facilities. So it works out. It was a, like I say, a win-win for both, both entities. And so I'm pretty excited about that one. It was a lot of hard work and Lane spent a lot of meetings, meeting with them. Him and I met together with them quite a few times. Um, but I think it's uh, the end result, I think is great.
So just for clarification, there's no cost on our part. We get the two million. Like, what do we have to do to get?
So we have, there, there is the cost of uh extending the sewer uh from the previous item.
Right.
Northwest sewer expansion. Um, and, and other than that, it adds. I'll jump in here, Jigga. This is the project we were talking about that um, we're estimating the project cost to be around ten million. Two million of that will be uh given back from J C W to the city. Uh, that's also been budgeted in our uh forecasts sewer fund. Uh, so the northeast and the northwest um are currently within the budget.
Yeah, so and, and that, that ten million you're talking about is all that sewer that we're expanding, not ten million dollars to serve these two.
No, no, no.
Ten million dollars for all the sewer work we're doing.
Yeah, so the, basically that turquoise line is, is a rough estimate of where, we don't know quite exactly where it's gonna end up. But it's a rough estimate of, of one of the options. Um, and then we're, we'll have a lift station down there that'll pump back east of one sixty nine highway. But it'll bring in um, I, I, I don't know the exact acreage, but it's probably in excess of a thousand acres. Uh, each one of those squares is a hundred and sixty acres, so you can kinda add them up. It has the ability to take in the quarters of ground west of Hedge from just south of one hundred ninety first street all the way to one hundred and seventy fifth street and then back east uh to Lone Elm.
And then back east, uh, to Lone Elm. So there's a significant drainage basin in that area.
What's the, um, for the portion that Johnson County's keeping, are they gonna maintain those force or the minimum force or whatever they're called?
Low-pressure system?
Yeah.
Yes, they, they will continue to maintain that low-pressure system, uh, which is also a very good deal for them.
We only took the, we only took the gravity ones, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And we will treat, we will treat that from there, but they will maintain it.
Yeah, okay. And the way the system will be is there's currently two lift stations that JCW has. We will, uh, they will be getting rid of those two lift stations and then they'll just tie directly into the gravity lines. Kind of the diagonal line coming across and then, um, it'll actually be about a half mile, it'd be the southwest corner of, uh, Nottingham Creek, where their other lift station is that'll tie in there.
So with the list stations being brought up, um, having them currently, um, being removed from the system as a whole, is that gonna incur any cost to us as far as they? Moving them from the system?
Yeah, JCW, we're, we'll work with them. Uh, I think they've requested about a year. Uh, after the system's in place, it'll probably take them six months to a year, maybe a little longer. At that point, it, uh, we'll work with them to make sure they remove them.
And just for my own education here, when we have these pump stations built into our sewer systems, typically they're on a piece of land that's leased by a private landowner in those areas, or does the county own that property that those lift stations are?
The JCW would own the land that's on, on those lift stations and that would transfer over to us.
What's the estimated revenue? You said four hundred homes, so monthly or yearly, what are we talking?
I believe it's about two hundred thousand, isn't it, Jacob?
Yeah, about, it's around two hundred thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
Estimated revenue.
I was just curious.
So for the area that they're gonna maintain, they're gonna bill it and then JCW will pay us, or will each of those, those individuals get the bill too?
I, I believe those will be directly billed to us.
Yeah.
Or we'll directly bill them, I'm sorry.
Even the, the ones that we're not taking over, we're just managing the water?
So all those four hundred and fifty-ish?
Everybody's gonna get a bill from Spring Hill then, that's what, okay. I didn't, I couldn't remember if we were, those are gonna be separated out to where it was like a one lump same, okay?
In this project, um, depending on design, the length of time for design, uh, we'll work with the engineers on trying to expedite this project, cause there is a need to, uh, get those lift stations offline as quick as we can. And there's all other, um, potential development, uh, down, well, along that whole corridor. Uh, so we'll want to move pretty quickly on this. We're hoping to have that completed by the end of twenty-six, if possible.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, the, the new customers, because they're getting service from two different, usually water and sewer together, on one bill, from one service provider, uh, or at least in my experience. They're getting them from two different ones, so they'll be getting two different bills, is that correct?
They already do.
I think they already do.
They're on water one.
Water one.
Okay, so they're already used to that.
Yeah, so it's just gonna change the JCW.
We will work with JCW, uh, once we get closer to that transition to, to notify the customers and make sure that they understand where the billings come from, um.
Why they're getting a bill from Spring Hill.
Right, we'll probably start six months ahead of time, letting them know. Uh, we just gotta get into that process to kind of find out, you know, is it gonna be Q three or Q four of next year or, or Q two of twenty-seven?
Especially with that neighborhood, because it is Olathe city limits and they're gonna get a city of Spring Hill bill, that's gonna be really confusing for some of them.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the cooperative agreement for sewer service with the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County, Kansas.
A second.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of annexation agreement for parcel ID nine F two, three, one, four, two, five, dash, one, zero, zero, two at the southeast corner of West one hundred seventy-fifth street and Woodland Road, including adjacent right-of-way on one hundred seventy-fifth street and Woodland Road. And Mr. Massey, you have the floor. Or Mr. Lau.
All right, um, the next two items are for the same parcel, which is at one hundred seventy-fifth and Woodland generally. Uh, so we are considering an annexation agreement with those property owners. And then the following item would be the annexation ordinance, uh, to finalize and bring that into the city. So, uh, this is something we've been working on for a few months now, coming to the right terms. Uh, this is part of what this land, what will go through this will be the northeast sewer. So we're gonna jump back to the other sewer extension we're doing. Um, and that started off this process of, uh, to serve these properties, we're asking them to come into the city before they can tap into our sewer. And these property owners said, well, we'll just go ahead and come in now rather, rather than waiting. So, uh, we do appreciate that. Happy to have more people be a part of the city. Um, it does include, uh, a rebate on the minimal property taxes of an unimproved area up until it gets developed. But they were, uh, the easiest probably of that group for those easements to work through, to get the sewer extension to go up through their property. Um, and these property owners did, uh, shoulder quite a bit of construction as it goes directly right up through their property, um, along their fence line. So, um, with that, I'll stand for any questions, uh, but otherwise fairly straightforward annexation that we're bringing you, so.
Do we have an interactive map to show exactly where it is? Another one on here is a little bit harder to read, but something from like Ames or something. Can we pull it up?
That one's good.
Let's see, I've got.
You got a converter, actually. Go to our backup option.
Well, she came through once before, so she'll probably come through again.
All right. Let's see how good I can do this. That's it.
So the skinny port, okay. I didn't know if it was, I was trying to picture it, yeah. Okay.
So zooming out here, it's one hundred and seventy-fifth and highway.
Okay. And do we have, is this a island annexation then, or do we have a?
No, we have to the.
The touch point here is?
Yeah, to the west of it, we have, we have that already, the Carvana site and to the north of it. North of it, yeah. Perhaps, yeah. So we're here, here, so we touch it north and west.
Okay, cool.
Fill that out a bit.
All right, sounds good. Sorry, I just wanted to see it.
No, thank you, yeah. Glad I could show off how quickly we can make that happen.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, I think just my only comment is it's always nice when, uh, somebody wants to voluntarily come into the city. So we're glad to have them and thank you for being willing to annex and, uh, welcome to Spring Hill.
Would you like the whole thing read out or?
You can say as.
I say yes.
You can say as stated in the staff report.
Uh, move to approve the annexation agreement as stated in the staff report.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is the continuation of that, but it's consider approval of annexation by Pamela K., parent and successor trustee of the M. Pauline Russell revocable, revocable trust dated October twentieth ninety-eight. As amended, the M. Pauline Russell Trust and Carol L. Lang, sole trustee of the Russell Family Trust dated August twenty-third, two thousand and seven. As amended, the family trust and together with the M. Pauline Russell Trust collectively referring to the herein as the property owners and the annexation ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, authorizing the annexation of land located at a one seven five one five Woodland Road, parcel ID nine F two, three, one, four, two, five, dash, one, zero, zero, two, including adjacent right-of-way on one hundred seventy-fifth street and Woodland Road. Mr. Lau.
As stated.
That's this one, you can definitely say as stated. Uh, so this is just the second half. Earlier, we were, uh, approving the agreement with the property owners for the annexation, all the terms setting that out. This is adopting the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven. Uh, that makes that annexation happen and effective. So, uh, no real new information from me here that we didn't already talk about, but I'll stand for questions if you have any. Same property we just looked at, but please don't ask us to pull it up again.
Any questions or comments?
No.
If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to accept the annexation request and adopt annexation ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, annexing the subject property into the city of Spring Hill, Kansas.
A second.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No call for an ordinance.
Oh, yeah, guess it is an ordinance, isn't it?
Sorry.
Madam Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Mr. Thrun?
Yes.
Mrs. Veeback?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven for annexation passes six zero zero.
Thank you very much. With that, that ends formal council action at this time. We'll move into announcements and reports. Um, I don't believe I had anything to announce or report. Oh, yes, I do. So it was brought to my attention, and let me pull it up on my phone real quick, just so I make sure I state it correctly. That there was, I maybe won't name the newspaper, but that there was a newspaper that reported that we had already approved uh, a property, uh, some new development on one hundred seventy-fifth and on the east side of one hundred seventy-fifth and one sixty-nine, and that is incorrect. Whatever the newspaper reported, they, they stated that we had already approved it at a previous council meeting and that was incorrect. The only thing we approved at the council meeting was the height variance. And that was just for overall for the city of Spring Hill, not for that specific property. Um, so I just wanted to state in case we had some people reach out to us that had read the newspaper article and said, oh, we didn't know you guys approved this and kind of blasted it everywhere and that is incorrect. We did not approve that. So I just want to put that out there, um, that that was not approved. We have not approved anything for that site. Um, something could be approved in the future, but nothing has been approved and, yeah, so. And I'm not saying that specific thing, but there's, I, I assume that that site will definitely be developed in the future. Uh, but we have no immediate thing there at this moment. With that, Mr. Young?
No report.
Mr. Thrun?
So I actually wanted to check in with Chief. Um, he's been in his, uh, role as the, uh, chief of police for Spring Hill now for a while. He's settling in. Um, I've heard good things. I just wanted to hear, um, what you've got moving, anything you'd like to tell the citizens about? Or, uh, let us know about, we're kind of interested to hear how things are going for you so far.
All right, I think this is on. I'm finally catching on just using the microphone, so that's a good thing. No, everything is, uh, going well, I believe. Having, so what I've been doing over the first really sixty days is, um, getting to know policy. Understanding how we do things here at Spring Hill PD. And I've also had the opportunity to meet with almost everybody one-on-one in the department to find out what they feel is going well, what they feel our strengths are, what they feel where, where we need to improve on. Um, one of the things that I've noticed right away is we do a great job of engagement with the community, obviously. That's a strong point of, of what we do and it's a hallmark and it will continue to be a hallmark. So the citizens can, will continue, and I think they've seen me out and about in several different venues, uh, interacting with the community. You know, and I hope to bring, uh, one of the things that I hope to bring is, um, uh, just improving our investigative techniques and skills. Um, so that, um, when a report is made with the police department, that we're taking it, um, as far as we can. And, um, that we're trying to be victim-centered. And that we're trying to, um, also, uh, bring, uh, resources to victims. So one of, one of my goals here in the first year is to, uh, maybe provide some victim services to people who uh, fall victims to crime in, um, in Spring Hill. But, um, those are some of the things that we've been working on, but I think the officers are doing a great job. Um, they're really helping me get acquainted and, uh, so, so far, so good. I'm, and I'm glad that you're hearing positive things as feedback from the community and hopefully the officers as well, so thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate you, sir. I just, I'm sorry to put you on blast. I, I've been meaning to check in with you and I haven't had the opportunity, so thank you for be, taking it in stride.
No, I appreciate the check-in. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I'll, once again, want to welcome you and I want to commend Chief Sutterby. Um, it was, we were all sad to see Chief Henson go, um, but I think he's jumped right in and he's doing an excellent job. And I, I like you, have heard nothing but great things about him. I've seen him myself personally out in multiple different areas throughout the community. I mean, National Night Out, he was at multiple different locations. I ran into him several times. Um, so I think it's, he's, he's jumping right in and, and becoming a part of the community and doing an excellent job, so. Um, and I think that also speaks to what we were talking about earlier, the things that we've been able to accomplish in the last several years. One of them is bringing on a new police chief. One of them was bringing on a new city administrator. We even brought Spencer on, brought Mrs. Dunn on, brought Mr. Spear on. So a lot of the staff that are very, very quality staff that I'm very proud to have, working for our community, have, have been brought on in the last four years. So I think, I think it's something that we all up here can be proud of. With that, Mr. Peel?
Uh, one thing, uh, Sycamore Ridge Golf Course is celebrating its twenty-five-year anniversary of being built. Uh, they're hosting a golf tournament on Sunday that, uh, I'm participating in. I don't know if any of you guys are or not, but sweet. The cool thing is they did a time capsule when they originally built it. And I've never been a part of opening one myself, so this will be my first one. And I think it's gonna be a really kind of cheesy but cool thing. I got a packet that somebody sent me or I found that's like fifteen pages long that has some notes and information about what's in it. Uh, I was planning on spending some time thumbing through that tomorrow, but I'm looking forward to the, the golf tournament, obviously. Uh, but I think this time capsule thing is a pretty cool little thing. So if any citizens want to check that out, I'm sure there'll be more info.
Uh, quick side note on that, so the time capsule portion of it has actually been rescheduled.
Okay.
Um, there were some, nothing, nothing really to do with us. There was some things that they, they weren't prepared for the amount of work that it would take to get the timed capsule pulled up. It, it's a solid concrete box and it's a lot more involved than the, than the chamber and everyone thought originally.
It's not just turning a key in a.
Yeah, it's not just getting a couple shovels.
Like a treasure chest for a pirate or something?
Yeah, it's not just getting a couple shovels and digging it up. And so with, with the time constraints that they had, we, we offered as a city to, to bring our equipment out there and try to, try to make it happen for them for this weekend. Um, but they just did not think that there would be adequate time to, to make it happen. And, um, and for the chamber to do it, there was actually gonna be significant cost for them to dig it up in, in the thousands. And so we just didn't feel like it was, we're gonna try to hold off. So the, the goal now is to try to do it for the golf tournament that happens for Fall Festival.
Okay, the rotary chamber in September.
So that, that's, that's our hope and, and we will, I will make sure that the city has, that our staff and equipment and stuff is available if need be, uh, to try to make that happen for them. Um, but yeah, unfortunately, it's been rescheduled, but I just.
That's okay. We'll just have to wait a couple more months.
Yeah, I was just talking to the chamber this afternoon, so it was just kind of something that was decided last minute.
When it actually happens, it's gonna be a cool thing.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to make it happen for this weekend. I was trying to pull, pull stuff together, so. Mrs. Veeback?
Yeah, I have one thing. First of all, Rhonda, congratulations to you and your team on the audit. I just went through one where I currently work and those can be interesting, so congratulations on that. Can somebody fill me in, let me know where we're at with the mowing? I think that's you, Jacob. We had a citizen that complains a lot of a certain area not being mowed. How's that looking?
Woodland Crossing.
Yeah, Woodland Crossing, I believe, is what, where the complaint was.
Might be more Amy.
I know it's been mowed and Brandon is, uh, constantly reviewing that. I'm not for sure the last time it was mowed, but it, it has been addressed at least once.
Yeah, he's keeping up on it.
He is keeping up on it.
Yes, I haven't got a status update, but I can ask him tomorrow and have Lain fill you in.
I just know that we have a passionate citizen and I want to make, I said I'd stick on it, so.
With the recent rain and heat, it, it could jump up pretty quick, so.
Sure. Uh, the other thing, just want to inform you all, um, I got together with Lain, um, and the chamber.
Uh, the other thing, just want to inform you all, um, I got together with Lane, um, and the chamber. Um, the chamber is doing a, um, strategic plan and wanting to include some of the city in that. I'm not talking about economic development. I'm just talking about, uh, a collaboration and a partnership. So I'm going to be meeting with them every now and then just to see how that's going. Um, and I came, we came out of the first meeting that either Lane or a designee or the mayor or somebody would go to those board meetings uh, that are the second Thursday.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows, I ha, I have been going to them for the last four years. So yeah, I go
Well, I wasn't calling you on it.
Oh, yeah, I know.
To, to bridge that, you know, collaboration, um, partnership. So I, I think that's great.
Yep.
Um, Hundred and Ninety-First signalization, any updates for that?
It's moving forward.
Okay.
I, I think the review is back, uh,
Is it back with KDOT at this point?
Um, it, we're, we're close.
Okay.
Basically, they've given the approval. There's a few little things that have to be worked out. Um, but we still anticipate probably sometime in, uh, September being able to go out and bid that and then start construction later this year.
Okay. Um, lastly, I just want to make an announcement, and that is, um, if anybody has any questions for me on anything, having to do with anything, I guess, um, please call me. I've been told I'm approachable. Uh, my phone number is six, two, zero, two, one, two, one, two, five, zero, eight, two, or you can email me at my city email. Um, I will not respond to social media. Um, I am not looking at it very often now, actually. So if there's a question that you have, um, I would be more than willing to answer that for you. If I don't know the answer, I'll get the information. But sometimes people answer on behalf of me or think they know and they don't, and it's just be easier to just get ahold of me. Um, pretty straightforward. So anyway, just want to put that out there. I don't have any other announcements.
Great.
No report.
Um, I did want to say, um, I think it's, it's fine to say something about Kristen, right? All right, yeah, so we have, so our, uh, public, uh, what's her official title? Public Information Officer. It just, it just changed recently, that's why. So it was something else. Our Public Information Officer, Kristen Boxman, she's been with us quite a few years. Um, she's done an amazing job, um, over the last few years. In fact, she's won, or she, with her at the helm, she, um, we've won national awards for our so, social media presence for the city of Spring Hill, including the police department and all the other Aquatic Center and all the different things that she does. So she does an amazing job. Um, she is being poached out from under us by Johnson County. Um, so she is moving on. Tomorrow is actually her last day. Um, so, but it, but it is, uh, exciting for her as well. It's something kind of a step up in her career, so I'm really excited for her, even though we're going to miss her. Um, and then also she, I just found out actually yesterday that she just won an award. In fact, she might not even know this. She just won an award for, uh, thirty under thirty in, in the state of Kansas for like, made like the list of people to watch, whatever, the list that they give of awards for people under thirty in Kansas. Um, so that's another award that she can add to her many awards that she's won at her job. Um, anyone that gets on the city's social media or anything involved with that knows that she just does an excellent job at her job and works many, many hours. There's many times where I've driven past City Hall at eleven o'clock at night, and she's still in here working, just working her butt off if there was something that, that needed to get done. Um, so thank you, Kristen, to you if you're listening out there. Appreciate you. We're going to miss you. Um, Chief Henson might not get a Christmas card this year, but we're gla, we're glad that she'll be, she'll be somewhere local in the area still working. So we're excited for her and for her opportunity, but sad to see her go. With that, Mr. Massey?
Uh, just a quick note. I want to, uh, thank the Public Works Department for working hard this summer and on the streets and the maintenance program. And I think maybe Jacob can give a quick update on where we're at on that. But, uh, with the heat and the, as much rain as we've had, they've kept up with the mowing, um, and, and also done a really good job on the street projects.
Mr. Lau?
I've talked enough tonight. No report.
Chief Sutterby?
Yes, I have a couple of things for you. So, um, I've been asked to follow up on, uh, the first issue is animal control in the city of Spring Hill. And so I have a meeting set up with the county, uh, with Johnson County, uh, SO to talk about, uh, you know, maybe partnering with them, uh, for some animal control services, but also there was something in the works uh, as I started talking to, uh, Captain Khan about this with the city of Gardner also. So I'll be exploring those two, um, things and hopefully have a report back to you in thirty days on that. And then secondly, I was asked, uh, to look at golf carts and the movement of golf carts throughout the city. And so currently I'm researching, um, how we can do that and do that safely. And so I, again, I'll have something for you in thirty days, a suggestion or proposal. I'll work with Spencer and some other folks to make sure that we've covered all the questions that you might have about that, so.
Thank you very much. And just to reiterate on both of those, um, as I was pulling up today, earlier this afternoon, there was our little friendly neighborhood fox with mange out here in, in the, in the side yard here pulling up the city hall. So I appreciate you looking into animal control. Cause I know we've had several calls about that specific fox and then a few other animals throughout. So yeah, I appreciate that. And, um, yeah, it could be a good thing. And then also to reiterate on golf carts, we want to, several of us up here want to expand the freedoms of golf carts, kind of make, maybe make some more areas where they might be able to go. So it's not to restrict anything for that. We actually would like to expand it a little bit more, but as Chief Sutterby said, we want to do that safely for everyone involved. Um, so, but I, uh, I just recently joined the golf cart club last year, so, um, I, I would enjoy that as well, so. Um, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk? Mrs. Dunn?
No report.
Mrs. Jones?
No report.
Mr. Spear?
Had to break the streak. Um, so first, uh, thank you to Mr. Massey. Our, our crews have been working hard this summer. Um, really the last couple of months focused specifically on, you know, asphalt work on our streets. And that's, that's in addition to the contract work that we have going on, uh, with our regular annual street maintenance program. L- last year, um, in-house, we, um, put down more asphalt, um, than we, than we have, at least in, in recent record. And, uh, this summer, we, we have already surpassed last, uh, last year's totals, and we're, um, just, just putting distance, uh, in that race. So, uh, crews are, are really working hard, uh, to do that, and I think it's, it's beginning to show on the streets. Uh, speaking of these contracted street maintenance program, uh, that is largely wrapped up. There are two streets that we, um, are chip sealing, and that will begin on, uh, Monday of next week. And I, they haven't given me an exact date, but I expect that will probably linger into Tuesday, but should be completed, uh, by Tuesday. The pool season, switching gears a little, pool season has wrapped up. Uh, it was another successful season at the Spring Hill Aquatic Center. And I'll be back, uh, here within the next, uh, month or two with some statistics and, and some more information on how that went. But, uh, um, also staff worked really hard, um, did a, did a great job and, and, uh, had a good season. Finally, talking sidewalks, September third, uh, is the date that we are looking at for a neighborhood meeting to discuss, uh, the addition of sidewalks and those things. So just following up on that item for you as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Um, for me, it's nice to see South Webster getting, getting repaved. I know that's been a B for all of us. Another one of the ones we wanted to get knocked off the list. Um, we knocked some of the heavy hitters like Woodland and Lone Elm and Victory and some of those the last couple of years. So it's nice to see Webster getting that done. I believe they'll probably be getting that striped. It looked like they marked it yesterday, so I would assume they'll stripe it in the next day or two. Um, so that's nice to see that get done. So appreciate that. And then also I wanted to speak, um, to the chip seal that was done around the glass plant area. Um, so that was actually something, we had several people asking us about that. That was actually not something that the city of Spring Hill did. That is something that the county did, and we actually were not aware that they were going to do it. Um, so we were not notified at all of it. And so they just kind of showed up one day and, and did it. We appreciate them doing it. Um, but it was not something that we had scheduled, or else we would have put some notice out there, kind of letting people know, hey, there's going to be some construction going on by the glass plant. So, um, in case anybody out there wondered about that one, uh, that was, hopefully they'll be striking that one soon. But that was, uh, that was something we were not aware of. We're, we're thankful, grateful for it, but it was not done by the city of Spring Hill. We're trying to, none of us up here are big fans of chip seal. We, we understand its need in some places, um, but we're trying to focus more on asphalt, even if it's less asphalt. Then, uh, and unless, uh, we want to do more of it than, than do chip and seal, so.
Yeah, that was, the only thing I was going to say is this year I thought our plan was probably the best yet since I've been up here with very little chip seal and much more asphalt. So
Yeah.
continue on that route. I think this year, to me, it's looked really good, so I'd like to continue that.
Oh, and
It's a huge talking point at the Harbor Shop. Everybody is very, very happy to see asphalt on the roads. It's, it's a very big deal.
Yeah, and thank you to you guys. I, I had specifically requested, um, that, we know we're going to tear it up and replace it when we put the Hundred and Ninety-First Street Light in, but between One Sixty-Nine Highway and Woodland Road, that stretch was just absolutely terrible. So I requested that they go out there and at least fill the potholes in, try to get that, and then the turn to Woodland Street, kind of add, add a little bit of asphalt on that turn, so you could actually make that turn without dropping six inches down into a hole. Um, so I appreciate, Jacob, you guys getting out there and getting that taken care of. Um, I did drive it, and I think I asked once, so I ap- apologize for putting you on the spot. But I did drive it earlier this week, maybe Monday, and there was still one pothole. Do you know if that last one did get filled? Sorry, that's putting you way on the spot. It was like right across the street from Moody's. So that was what, they got all the other ones, but they missed one, so.
I don't know specifically, um, but I will say we've, uh, the, the patching, uh, that we've done on Hundred and Ninety-First, realistically, you know, a month from now, it's going to need it again. So that, that is a street that, that
It's pretty rough.
We've talked to a staff and just said, you know, watch it and, and plan to, to do it, to redo it, uh, regularly. So I, I don't know about that one
Okay.
in particular, but we will continue to be out there, uh, patching and trying to maintain that until we can do the larger project.
Yeah, it'll be nice when we get it all torn up and all the lanes redone and everything. But yeah, I just wanted to, I've had quite a few citizens reach out about that, that section there that live either over in that area or go across to the school. And so it definitely drives a lot better now, but there was that one that I still hit pretty hard in my trucks. Trying to see if we got that, that one taken care of. All right, with that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number one. We have multiple tonight. So for those of you in the audience that don't want to stick around for a long time, um, we've got quite a few of them tonight, so it may be, we may be in it for the long haul here.
And we can, this first one, you can take it down to fifteen minutes
Okay.
from twenty, so.
Could we use that five minutes for a break?
Yeah, yeah, we can do it.
Do it.
All right, I move city council recess into executive session for fifteen minutes with a five-minute, uh, break uh, to receive advice at council regarding economic development pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at nine twenty-five PM. No formal actions anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Lane Massey, Jacob Spear, Allison Abel, Rhonda Dunn, and Spencer Lau.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero, zero. See you guys shortly.
Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in an open meeting at 9:25 PM. No votes were taken and decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. And with that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number two.
And this one's fifteen? That's what you got on here? Keep it that? All right. I move the city council recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to receive advice to council regarding economic development pursuant to KSA 7543-19B2. Of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at, oh, easier, 9:41 PM. No formal actions anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Lane Massey, Jacob Spear, Allison Abel, Spencer Lau, and Amy Long.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. See ya in a bit. All right, welcome back, everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in an open meeting at 9:41 PM. No votes were taken and decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. And with that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number three for five minutes, it looks like.
I move the city council recess into executive session for five minutes to matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 7543-19B1. Of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 9:48 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Spencer Lau.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. See you soon.
Going back to Taylor Swift, and I'm not a Swiftie. My niece is a Swiftie. I can't wait to hear that album that he, they went on and on about how this is, was a happy time, and it's my original people that did.
And be all pop, dancing.
Yeah.
Like nineteen years ago.
Yeah, I was like, I can't wait for that to come out.
They started pistol hop all of a sudden, like Shake It Up.
Yeah.
The, because the producer that she got. It's just crazy that she was doing this though in the European, like when she was.
Flying to Sweden.
Yeah. Doing it, coming back, doing a concert, going to Sweden, I mean.
Think about that. She's in her personal jet. She's taking her, you know.
Yeah.
And her lives.
The fact that, yeah.
And she could spin on that plane. And then she, and then you have to think about, Europe's like flying from Kansas City to St. Louis, which is just not very far.
But don't take the way back, because she was still tired.
Oh, yeah.
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 Are you and your daughter's Swifties?
No.
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 No, no, no. I mean, there are a couple of songs that are like of hers. So she's on my Spotify, but I'm not really into it. Me, I'm not her audience.
Not.
Not her audience. And that whole Tortured Poets thing, I had no interest in that whatsoever.
Well, I think there was one song I remember that she did with, what's his name? She was supposed to.
I like, I think I like that. And I'm, I, I don't, they said like this album, who album is supposed to have like some bangers and be more poppy. But when I was listening to the interview, I thought it was gonna be more of life of a showgirl, like telling how hard it is to be on skate, stage and portray one thing and then go back and.
All right, welcome back, everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened an open meeting at 9:59 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated, and with that I entertain a motion to move into executive session number four for 10 minutes.
I move the city council recess into executive session for 10 minutes for the preliminary